Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem. After a consultation with the city council, I have determined that it is not practical for the city council and I to meet together tonight. So therefore pursuant to the established procedures adopted by the city council, we are holding this meeting virtually, and all council members are participating virtually. For virtual meetings, council members will be muted. If a member asks to be recognized, at that time, they will be recognized and unmuted.
Hi, my name's Lisa.
When they do, it's time for a vote. It will be a roll call vote. Council members will be recognized, and they will raise their hand via the WebEx formula, and state their vote by audio as well. Mayor Pro Tim Burke is participating by audio only, so she will only have a voice vote as be required for her vote. May the city secretary please call the roll.
Councilmember Larson.
President.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke. Councilmember Adams.
Did you call Burke?
Yes.
President, I didn't hear it. Here it is. Thank you.
Here. Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you all for participating tonight. Would you please join the city council in the moment of silence? Our meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 AM again. Of course, members of the public may always look at our agenda in advance, as well as look at videos of previous meetings by simply going to the City of Winston-Salem website, which is www.cityofws.org, and just watch or click on the "Watch Meetings Online" link. Tonight's agenda is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. As always, the practice of this council, the consent agenda is the first order of business. Items on this agenda are enacted with one motion. Unless a council member so requests, we will remove that item and consider it individually. Council members, are there any items that you wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, C3.
C6.
I'd make the motion to approve the balance.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Taylor, seconded by Councilmember Clark, to approve the balance of the agenda. I will do the roll call. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Here. Oh, yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
That is passed unanimously. We'll go to item C1.
C3.
C3.
Excuse me. The staff has asked that we pull item C1 and C3 for further work. Councilmember Adams, is that okay? We would now vote on that tonight and bring that back. I know you wanted the C3 pulled.
Thank you. I'm okay with it, because I do have some more questions.
Okay, we'll bring that back to the next meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. So we are good then with approval of the...
C6.
C6, Mayor.
Oh, I thought it was G6. C6, Clark. All right, would you read, please, item C6?
Item C6, resolution authorizing agents to execute and file applications for certain state and federal financial assistance under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster and Emergency Assistance Act.
Councilmember Clark, you asked for this item.
Of a generic question. I know Ms. Adams has been spearheading our efforts nationally, but I was pleasantly surprised to see under C6 that there are certain pools of money we might be eligible for from a disaster. And if the city manager, could you just comment on what the potential here is?
As for assistance, city manager DuKane to comment on it, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim Burke, members of the city council.
Good evening.
Name is Dame DuKane, Assistant City Manager. Councilmember Clark, this is very similar to the FEMA reimbursements that we received under Tropical Storm Michael. So currently FEMA has authorized two categories that would be eligible for reimbursement due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Primarily, it's for the measures taken by a community to prepare, prevent, and respond to the pandemic, and then the expenses incurred in actually filling out the paperwork to apply for reimbursement through FEMA. So this is the same process we followed for Tropical Storm Michael, and this action allows the council to have the city manager appoint representation to fill out those documents and submit them to FEMA and the state.
Thank you. I have no further questions, and would move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark moves approval, seconded by Councilmember Taylor. We'll now do any discussion on this. All right, we'll do a roll call. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. There are two items related to bonds. There's an item related to the Housing and Community Development Program. There's an item related to Strategies and Policing Innovation Grant. There are two items related to the Federal Transit Administration Program, Section 5307 CARES Act funds. An item related to MWBE goals for the on-call concrete repairs project. An item related to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, as well as the public comment period. The public comment period is a time the city council and I set aside once per month to allow cities, citizens, to address the council and myself on items that are germane to city government. For tonight's virtual public comment period, voice messages will be played, and each message will be limited to three minutes. Councilmembers, the staff has asked that we pull item G6 from the agenda for additional staff work, and that will come back at a later time. Miss Kenny, would you please read item G1?
Item G1, consideration of actions regarding the issuance of $6,840,230 general obligation bonds and $30,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, making certain statements of fact concerning proposed bond issues.
I'd like to ask our chief financial officer, Lisa Saunders, to make some brief comments about the actions that the city council is being asked to do tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Burke, and members of the city council.
Good evening.
Tonight's action start the legal process to borrow $6,840,000 in general obligation bonds. North Carolina State statute allows a municipality to issue debt in 2/3 of their net debt reduction from the preceding year, which is $6,840,000. The projects that will be financed by these bonds were approved by city council in June of 2019 with the Capital Improvement Program. Exhibit A specifically lists all of the bonds or the projects that will be funded with these bonds. The bonds will be sold on a competitive basis with the Local Government Commission on June the 9th. I also want to add that we will be borrowing 65 million in bonds, and we won't bring that to council until next month, because they do not require a public hearing. The 2/3 bonds do require a public... We've already had a public hearing on the referendum bonds, which we'll also be issuing those. The second item that we're going to ask approval for is to refund about $30 million of our general obligation bonds. They're eligible for refunding if the market conditions are favorable in June. We'll refund Series 2008, 2010, and 2012 bonds. So this first action, which is A1, is a resolution you're being asked to approve that states certain facts about the bonds and allows us to apply to the Local Government Commission for these bonds. The second item, which is next, 1B, actually calls for a public hearing on the 2/3 bonds May the 4th, and allows us to publish those notices in the paper. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. Are there any questions by council or Ms. Saunders?
I have a question.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes. Ms. Saunders, being the current market outlook presently, do you foresee or has that impeded or helped us, hurt us during this process right now?
Well, as you know, it's very volatile, but the latest numbers that we've looked at appear to be still a good time to issue our municipal bonds. Of course, we're going to watch the market very closely, and if it gets to June the 9th, and it's not the right time, then we won't sell them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any other questions of Ms. Saunders? Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion on the resolution making certain statements of fact concerning the proposed bond issue.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? I do the roll call. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes, and please call me Ms. Saunders tomorrow. I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you. Now, we need to read these bond orders into the record. Miss Kenny?
...issuance of $30,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Bond ordering issuing... Bond ordering authorizing the issuance of $5 million street and sidewalk bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and bond authorizing the issuance of $1,840,000 parks and recreation bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Thank you. Council, we do not need to vote on these tonight, it's simply reading them into the record. Would you read, please, item G1B?
Item G1B, resolution of the City Council of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, calling a public hearing on the bond orders directing publication of notices of said public hearings and filing of a debt statement. Public hearing scheduled for May 4th, 2020.
Entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any discussion? Not all those... Well, can't do that. Got to call the roll.
Right.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
And that is unanimous. Thank you. And we have item G2.
...2020, 2021 Housing and Community Development Program, and authorizing submission of the 2020, 2021 Annual Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. There is a budget in this, of course, but the budget would be reviewed by the city council during our annual budget deliberations and budget adoption coming up. I would entertain a motion to get this on the floor.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams moves approval, and seconded by Councilmember Cipio and Councilmember McIntosh. Is there any further discussion on this item? All right. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Looks like it's stopped.
It's frozen.
Yes. It's frozen.
Okay. Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
There it is.
All right, so we'll count that as unanimous. We have a quorum. I mean, Councilmember McIntosh is not excused, so that will count as an affirmative vote. All right, maybe we have item G3.
Item G3, year 2020, Strategies and Policing Innovation Grant to Support a Real-Time Crime Center for the Winston-Salem Police Department.
I'd like to ask Councilmember Taylor if he is comfortable in making a motion for the... Get down on the floor.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Maybe we have item G4.
Item G4, consideration of items related to the Federal Transit Administration, FTA Program, Section 5307 CARES Act Fund.
Thank you. We do have a resolution to enter into an agreement with Davidson County, as well as an annual appropriation tax levy ordinance amendment, as well as a project budget ordinance amendment to appropriate funds. Councilmembers, would you like a summary on this, or are you ready to move forward?
I'm ready.
All right. Entertain a motion to get it on the floor.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion, my Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Cipio, to approve this. Did I hear someone who would like to discuss? Have a question, anyone? All right, we'll move forward. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have item G5.
Item G5, resolution to approve the Federal Transit Administration Formula Program, Section 5307 CARES Act funding, suballocation for split letter for the Piedmont Authority for regional transportation.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessie, you're chairman of that board. I assume you're in favor of this item?
Yes, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion seconded by Councilmember Bessie, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Is there further discussion or questions? If not, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
That is unanimous, and thank you very much. Maybe we have item... We pulled item G6, so we'll go back to staff for additional work. We have a new item, G7, if you would read that, Miss Kenny.
Item G7, resolution authorizing the temporary appointment of ad hoc members to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Councilmembers, in approving the review of the $1 million city grant for the COVID-19 Recovery Fund, response fund that is, you asked that we have three additional ad hoc members to help with the review of that, and you gave me names for that, but you wanted those folks to be able to vote, and so tonight's action, of course, does allow them to vote on these items coming forward. After the million dollars is fully expended, then these three ad hoc members would then be excused from serving on the bond review committee. I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Taylor, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Is there any further discussions?
Mayor...
Yes, Councilmember Larson.
So this is a change to allow them to vote where they weren't before.
That is correct, Councilmember Larson.
And then the idea here is to separate the city money from the other money, and put it under the bond committee, and add three people to the bond committee.
That is correct. As I understand it, the private funds that have been raised have basically been expended or approved for council for projects, and so all the projects that are coming forward to the bond review committee would be all going towards the city's million-dollar contribution.
We have not voted on the three new members yet, have we?
No, we're just doing it tonight.
You want to list those three members for us? Is that part of this motion?
Yes.
Well, the motion is to basically approve that, and we can certainly do that. The Councilmember Larson, Miss Kenny, could you read the names of the three individuals? I've got it if you don't.
I have.
Okay, thank you.
The ad hoc members would be James Perry, Morticia TT Parman, and Corey McCann.
And they would be voting members to the bond committee.
That's right. Yeah, temporarily until the $1 million is expanded, then they would not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Bessie.
There was no information on background of the individuals contained in the packet or the condition, and I wonder if we could have a brief summary of each of the three, please.
Certainly, I will... I think what I'll do is call on the council members who recommended. Councilmember Adams recommended James Perry. Councilmember Adams, would you make a comment, please, about Mr. Perry?
Yes, Mr. Perry is the CEO of the Winston-Salem Urban League. He is very well respected in the community when it comes to social justice issues. The Urban League probably facilitates a lot of programs and information to the community, particularly the Latino, African-American, and the urban core of Winston-Salem. He brings a wealth of knowledge of how nonprofits work, whether it's the grant writing or the grant providing. So I didn't... I thought he would be a great asset to this committee, because he has that thought process that seems to not just have that corporate side, but he also has that community activism side, as well as the legalist side as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Cipio recommended Ms. Parman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Parman is a native of Winston. She's a retired veteran, and she has been very, very engaged in lots of community initiatives and in the political process. She is very well-known. She has lots of connections, and she has a passion for the community and for the people in the community. Recently, she did run for the Northeast Ward seat, and she was not successful, but many people supported her. And I thought her viewpoint would be really, really great on this committee, because she really understands grassroots people, and actually people of all walks. So I really respect her opinion on this, and I think she'd bring a lot to that decision-making.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry.
Heard candidate.
Can you hear me?
Ms. Burke, you want to speak?
Oh, Councilmember Burke, I'm sorry.
Yes. I've known Ms. Parman ever since she came to Winston about 45 years ago. She has had the experience with her mother and some of us at the grassroots from a child working in the political world. During her campaign, what she may have said that I didn't hear, the things that she said was always positive in communicating with me. And I do feel that she is a grassroots person, that she can understand some of the things, and also being a veteran, served this country well. And so when I saw her name, she had earlier asked me about being on the committee, and I had had her some applications, and had told us some of the choices that we had made of this. And so this came about, and I'm very pleased. She speaks very well. She is conscientious and dedicated, and I've represented her, not the 45 years she's been here, but most of those years in the Northeast Ward. So I am in agreement with this, and I would ask us to give a prayer, because she did have, not long ago, her house on fire, and she's dealing with some things right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke.
This is wonderful. Thank you.
I'd recognize, Councilmember Taylor, if you would please give your thoughts about the person you recommended.
Yeah, mayor members of the council, I had the opportunity to recommend Mr. Corey McCann, who is a local grassroots community organizer. He's very well-known in the community for his work. He's also an employee of Mechanics and Farmers Banks. He's certainly a young man that needs no introduction, but he started working in the community very young. He's gained a lot of popularity. People respect his word and his will for the things that he do in the community, and I think he's a very good prospect to be considered for this committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Councilmember Bessie, I hope that answered your questions.
Yes, I was well acquainted with Mr. Perry and Ms. Parman. I didn't know him, but he's McCann as well. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we do have a motion to approve these individuals, as well as allowing them to have voting rights during the decisions relating to the $1 million city contribution. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Someone wanted to be recognized.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Larson.
It is a point of order, a question. This committee is going to meet on Friday, is that correct?
Thursday, I think.
Thursday. Do we have any idea how many applicants we actually have at this point?
I believe it's close to 35. The city manager's on the call, I believe. Mr. Garrett, or Mr.... Yeah, I can answer that. I think we got 42 applicants, and they'll be meeting. The committee's getting all the applications to review as of tomorrow. Staff is also vetting them for just the minimum requirements, and then the committee will meet Friday afternoon to make decisions. We also just got the information from United Way. They did a release today that they had granted out all the rest of their private money, the 1.4 million, to 36 other local nonprofits, and I'll share that with you tonight.
Are they receiving any more money? Is the United Way still receiving money?
They're still soliciting money, yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
I need to say something.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes, we know that Councilwoman Adams is the chairman of our community development house of the general government, and she has been very conscientiously and working very hard to make the transparency of what's going on, and then to push with an understanding, which I felt was positive, that we as the elected officials, and we appreciate what you're doing, Mayor. We know you're out there every day, and it's really dangerous, but you're still out there representing the people in the way that you should be, and that our city staff, city manager, city staff. But I thought it was very proper and fitting that the chairman of the committee, especially that committee that she chairs, should make sure all of us are aware, but especially that committee. And again, I thank her for her hard work and effort that she's put into this to make us all aware, and we all are concerned about it. We're all concerned about those who need, but as chairman of her committee, she has worked hard for that to become real. who need, but as chairman of her committee, she has worked hard for that to become real.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. All right, we have approved this item. We'll now go to the public comment period, where this is a time once per month that city council asks citizens to address it, all matters are germane to city government. Tonight, we doing this virtually, what we did was to ask individuals to call in, record their message, and we'll now hear those messages as we go through. First person that called in was Lisa Zipkin.
Hi, my name's Lisa Zipkin. You like zebra? I, you like Paul K? I am like Nancy. I reside at 511 North Cherry Street, and my question is, can we add a comprehensive list of resources on the city website where people can volunteer to help as well as receive the help that they need during this shutdown crisis? Thank you.
Good suggestion. There is a hotline that the county has that I think we can continue to publish that clearly, and we're also showing, I believe, that Mr. Manager, the list of the agencies that have been approved for funding from the COVID-19 Response Fund, so we can certainly continue to do that. Speaker number two did not leave a name. Speaker number two.
Yes, that was called in because we are here. I actually work in the Department of Social Services in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I was calling and dealing with essential workers as far as us working here. I was trying to see if we are here as essential workers and we are required to meet the needs of the community. I'm just trying to figure out if we doesn't, if we do not have any of the PPE that we needed for ourselves, and we're here every day. We're not getting any extra compensation, and I'm just looking at different things over Winston-Salem, so I'm just trying to figure out what exactly is going on with the Department of Social Services and as far as, you know, what would be done to help us and our essential workers as well, the ones that could not work from home. Thanks.
Certainly a valid question. I would say, Mr. Manager, we might want to further that response or that question to the county manager. I'm sure you'll be glad to follow up with that with DSS and others. All right, the final caller was Lisa Summers.
Yes, my name is Lisa Summers, 590 Mock Street, apartment 329, 27127. My phone number is 336-582-2207. I want to address some issues with the mayor that has overtaken and overbearing bullying, theft, and somebody, please give me a call back. Thank you. Bye-bye.
We'll certainly be happy to follow back up with her. There were no other individuals who signed on to call, to talk. Councilmembers, that's all the agenda. I'd like to just call on any councilmember who'd like to make a comment tonight before we adjourn.
Mayor, this is Robert.
Robert Clark.
I would like to just give a shout out to the staff and all the employees. I think despite the difficult circumstances we're working under, I see us moving forward on a number of fronts, and it's taken a lot of extra effort, but I appreciate everything that's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
And then Councilperson Cipio.
Yes, I have been, as you all know, inundating you with the National League of Cities communication, and our citizens need to also be able to understand where we are at this point. Going forward, councilmembers as well as staff, thank you so much for following up on a lot of these emails and communications, because right now, every city in the country has to step up and make sure, try to make sure, that we're not asking for the money because we want the money for our citizens in our city, whether it's small businesses, our police, fire services. We're asking for this money because we have to. So, and it's, this whole initiative of the care money crosses red, blue, black, white, young, old, it doesn't matter, population size. So I'm imploring and asking the citizens of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County to please call your congressional representatives and our U.S. senators to support making sure that municipalities and cities are benefiting from the CARE Act versus cities that have 500,000 people. Call them, email them, social media, but you need to light up the communication because we need that money.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Well said. Thank you very much. Councilperson Cipio?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers, I want to give a shout out to all of our residents. Staying at home has been very difficult for many. Not working has been really difficult and tough for a lot, but I really want to congratulate our residents on hanging tight and being tough, that this virus has not overtaken our community as it could have, and part of it is because we are staying in place. We're respecting the leadership and the direction from our state and our city, and I want to congratulate our residents. I know it's hard, and there are some more tough days to come. I want to also congratulate all of those who've given from their heart. There are people really doing some fine things in our city to help those who are having difficulties. They want to be anonymous, and I congratulate all of them for what they are doing to support families, businesses, the food banks, at the various churches. It's just been a phenomenal thing to see. I celebrate them. We have a fine city, and we have outstanding residents, and I want to congratulate them. And I hope when this virus is done and we have put it to rest, that we have one big party, because it's something to celebrate, all the love that's being shown for all of our residents across this city.
Thank you, Councilperson Cipio.
Mayor, may I say something?
Oh, Councilmember, yes, Burke.
Yes, the two councilwomen have said some interesting things, and I know as they were talking, we all had thoughts in our heads about how blessed we are that we understand the word unity and how we've been generally concerned and how many of the citizens have given us ideas and suggestions. The other day, I called so many of my citizens, I've got a list of names, and I called to see how they're doing. One of the citizens I represent called me because she was so excited. She said, I got a call, and I want to know all of the first responders, whether they're working for the city, the county, or for this city in general with the private and public hospitals and doctors' offices, and how they've just extended themselves, still trying to take care of patients, and especially us who are at this stage where we are fragile, and we have to be very, very careful. And, but to have one of the elderly citizens call me, she said, I'm so excited. And I said, well, that's wonderful. It's good to be excited about something, miss keep that somebody, God, in front to take care of us. She said, I'm so excited because I got a call from the chief of police, and the chief of police calling at random citizens, and especially our elderly citizens, to tell them that they are safe and to ask them, what can I do as a chief to make things better for you? And I just think that's something that we should observe and should appreciate, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. As Councilwoman Cipio did note, I did extend our stay-at-home order until May the 7th, and I certainly recognize the difficulties this is placing on our citizens, and particularly small businesses and others there, but it's working, folks. We, as Councilmember Cipio mentioned, is keeping the numbers under control. We're not overwhelming our health system there. But on the other hand, I do know that we've got to begin thinking about getting our economy reopened. In that regard, I am putting together a small working task group, hopefully in conjunction with Forsyth County, to look at ways to begin a incremental reopening at the right time when we get the right advice from our medical community to do that. Tomorrow at noon, there'll be a press conference that will announce, I think, another major initiative here in our city that will hopefully allow us to put another nail in the coffin of this virus and to hopefully be able to get our economy open even sooner than we originally thought. So tune in tomorrow on the city's website, and you'll see the press conference there. Other comments, councilmembers? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember Larson and Adams to adjourn. All those who favor the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Burke, thank you.